Hey, Navigators.
Hello, future Navigator families. Thank you for joining us. I am Kelly Thorson. I'm the principal here at LEED STEM Academy and I appreciate all of you attending. I'll have my admin staff and counselors introduce them staff themselves as well.
I'm Danielle Williams. I'm in one of the assistant principals.
I am Estasia Vargas and I'm another assistant principal.
If you can't tell, she's joining us from the North Pole. She's out climbing Mount Everest. I couldn't remember which one she was at, but she's off on an excursion.
I'm at the soccer game.
I'm C.L. Murray. I'm currently the sixth grade counselor for this year and I'll stay with my sixth graders through seventh and eighth grade.
I'm Todd Seer. I'm the current eighth grade counselor, which means I'm going to be the sixth grade counselor next year.
And I am Mrs. Hastings, the magnet recruiter.
And in the background, who is making all of this happen, Mr. Morell, one of our CTE teachers in robotics. He is the man behind the scenes that makes sure that we can present this information and look good at the same time. Mr. Morell, do you want to go ahead and put up our slide deck, please, sir? Thank you.
Looks huge.
So, we want to, we're going to cover today just what it is to be, what LEED STEM Academy is. We will look at what makes LEED a magnet school. We will cover the expectations for students and the theme and our magnet contract. And then we'll talk about what it means to be a navigator and to be a part of our system here. And when you move through from sixth grade to eighth grade, what it is you're going to get here at LEED and our expectations around that. So, and it kind of is encompassed in the email that you all received inviting you to join us tonight. The mission of our school, we really want to collaborate with you and our, and our community partners. Besides making this a safe environment and we allow, encourage our teachers to have that rigorous instruction, we want to prepare you to move into some STEM school beyond here. And so that when you leave here, you have a really good foundation on what it means to be a part of a STEM program and have the skills necessary to pursue that in the future. Ladies, anything you want to add to my explanation of the mission statement?
No, I think that was awesome. Just noting that we are focusing on those three strands. Some of you are pretty, probably pretty familiar with that, being that you wanted to be a part of our school. Our architecture and construction strand, our robotics, automation, cybersecurity, and our information technology piece. It's all there for you to be a part of and to be awesome and go beyond. We definitely are working to set that foundation.
The vision behind LEED is to, the LEED STEM Academy students will acquire the knowledge and skills to actively participate and contribute in a global society. And that includes both the social, social emotional aspect of contributing as well as the academic piece. So, we have, we are educating students and really pushing them on both ends. And our expectations for students is very high. And that comes through in our LEED way and we teach that to our students starting day one. And we don't just talk about what we expect students to do. We teach them what we want our students to do and how we want them to act and how they're going to be contributing to not just a global society. While they're here, they're going to contribute to the LEED Academy and, and our experience as we move through the 23-24 school year. It's hard to say. We're already that far, like next year, 23-24. So, what is LEED? What does it mean to be a part of LEED and, and why is LEED a magnet school? We're going to first look at, what is the magnet school definition according to CCSD? Did we lose, did I lose that slide? I'm sorry. There it is. Magnet schools offer specialized learning themes for students who have unique interests. They utilize student interest to diversify their curriculum. Magnet schools create awareness of various career pathways, identify and develop, and nurture students' talents. That's the definition for what we are about. It's more than that for us. It is what we do in everything we do. And we're going to talk about what STEM means here at LEED a little later on. Everything we are about is pushing students in all aspects of growing as an educational environment for us and for them. We want to make sure that we push, we push our students. Anything you want to add to that, ladies?
And gentlemen.
And gentlemen, and Mr. Seer, I know, but specifically, that's our counselors is the next slide.
No, I was just being funny. Oh, gosh.
If you can't tell, we'd also like to have fun here at LEED. So, typical sixth grade schedule. Mr. Seer or Ms. Murray, why don't you want to take that and kind of explain what that looks like? And I, I hope that I have that accurately put in here.
I'm sorry, my daughter is distracting me behind me. So, typical sixth grade schedule, we have core classes. So, the core classes are the four big ones: English, math, social studies, and science. Except, sixth graders don't have a social studies class. At LEED, they're, they have an extra class, well, a couple of extra classes, but one class that every single sixth grader is required to take is called Design and Modeling. And that class introduces the sixth graders to all the magnet programs that we offer. It gives them a taste of robotics. It gives them a taste of architecture. It gives them a taste of cybersecurity. So that when they enter seventh grade, they can choose the CTE or magnet program that they want to join. And they're going to be a part of that program for the rest of their time at LEED. So, that's the Design and Modeling class. Every single sixth grader takes that class. We're doing things a little differently next year. For those that are familiar with us now, we are not going to offer Spanish and French to our sixth graders. Not specifically Spanish class and French class. We're offering what's called Language Explorations class, which pretty much covers several languages. So, we're not asking students to choose, "Do you want to be in Spanish? Do you want to be in French?" That's not an option next year. It's something brand new that's starting up next year. And then, one of the things that's unique about us is we require our students to participate in the Fine and Performing Arts. You know, we, we offer band, we offer orchestra, we offer choir to our sixth graders. That's electives that they can pick. The, oh, go ahead, Ms. Williams.
Don't forget guitar.
Oh, sorry, I forgot about guitar.
And art.
Yes.
He's in the eighth grade section of his brain still, so.
I am. It's been two years. And the last time I was a sixth grade counselor, we were online. So, this is all, you know, this is an adjustment for me and I apologize, but I'll get it. I'll get it. But anyway, that's a basic explanation of the schedule that your child is going to have next year. Should I touch upon the electives, like, when?
The one thing that I do want to add, understand that sixth grade ELA and sixth grade math, those are accelerated programs. So, our goal for every student here at LEED is to do in math, all of sixth grade math and part of seventh grade math in their sixth grade year. And in seventh grade, they're going to do the rest of seventh grade and all of eighth grade in their seventh grade year so that students as eighth graders enroll in algebra. That is our goal for all students. So, it is, again, part of our magnet program. We're a STEM school, science, technology, engineering, and math. We are going to push all students in math. If your student struggles in math already, understand it's going to be a little difficult for them and they need to make sure that they are able to persevere, work hard, develop some problem-solving skills, and some mental toughness. Because we are pushing as a magnet school. And English is similar. We are pushing students by the time they leave here in eighth grade, they should be enrolling in some ninth grade honors English or some kind of advanced English course when they enroll in high school. We are not allowed to offer ninth grade English in middle schools anymore in Clark County School District. And our goal, though, is to make sure that students are moving into an advanced English program. We are pushing. So, just know that in advance, when you come here, we are pushing kids, right? We're not, we don't slow down very well. We are pushing.
Yeah, piggybacking on that, we sometimes have parents that request that their sixth grader not be placed in an accelerated class. Can, can my child have a non-accelerated English class? The answer at LEED is no. Not, not English, not math. You know, all, all of our core classes are accelerated. So, that's not an option, you know, to put your, place your child in a non-accelerated class. If you're coming to LEED, if you're a LEED Navigator, you are getting an accelerated core class. So, please understand that.
Yes, and even though it's not noted on our slide, the science is also accelerated. So, just know, overall, all, all those core courses are accelerated. And we set high expectations and we expect for our students to actually jump over and extend our expectations and set the bar a little higher for those that are coming behind.
And also, I have seen sixth graders struggle with the Design and Modeling class. It's something completely new to their scheduling. And, and the vocabulary, it could also be new. And the whole process of design and modeling in there and all the different steps. And a lot of them may say, "You know what? I don't get it. I want out of it." Well, that's not an option. It is part of the curriculum. And you persevere, you learn about it, and as you gain more knowledge about it and practice it, it does become easier. And you're not struggling anymore.
And that course does lay a foundation for what we do across our entire system, right? The design process, which is integral for the design and modeling class, is something we do across our entire system. So, if you've had any experience with the design process from any of your elementary schools, this, this will flow nicely. If you haven't, it is going to be new learning, and that's okay. Not everybody has to have that. And, and it is going to be some new learning. Speaking of learning, one of the things I just want to touch on in this, in this section also is our grading. So, grading here at LEED is 100% standard-based, 100% summative assessment-based. Their homework does not contribute to improving their, their grade in the course. We grade on a one through four rubric on the summative assessment to tell you about the student's learning. Okay, so Kyle, will you go to the next slide for me and I'll explain that? So, the goal that they understand, the, next one though, Kyle, I want to talk about that. I'm going to come back to that one. Thank you. The goal is to provide teachers, students, and parents with an accurate picture of their learning and to encourage a dialogue about what they're mastering in the class as it's related to the standards. So, it's not about what they've, it's not about the work ethic and it's not about the citizenship. It's about the learning. And we use our grading to really share, truly share what they're learning in the class related to the standard. So, that's why it's 100% summative assessment and it's standard-based. So, the standard-based grading at LEED, that's a, starts with a four. And go up for me, Kyle. Go back one slide or go to the grading. Thank you. So, a four demonstrates in-depth, beyond grade level expectations, learning. It is not easy to get a four in our system. You have to push and you have to push beyond what is just expected. If you do what's expected, that's a three. Three is meeting grade level expectations. Those grades also correlate to the letter grade. A four correlates with an A, a three correlates roughly with a B, a two correlates with a C, and a one correlates with a D. To fail here at LEED, you have to try. You have to not do your work. You have to not try on a summative assessment. And so, if a student is getting some foundational skills, that's a C. A foundational skill for us is a C. So, that's where a two is linked. And again, a lot of our parents have struggled with the fact a four is going beyond the expectation. A four is learning next grade level material, producing beyond what the teacher is asking. Because if you just do what the teacher asks, that's at expectations, that's at grade level, that is just meeting the target. It's not going beyond the target. Anything we want to add to that?
I think also, one thing to add is that the standard-based grading for us here is to also allow students to take ownership of their learning. So, if a student is aware, because teachers are very transparent about the rubric, they're very transparent about where the standard is, you know, how it has to be met to the student, the student is then able to even have those dialogues and conversations with the teachers to say, "Hey, I know I landed here, but these, this is where I'm trying to be." And so, the teacher and student work together to build a program of study to help them achieve or go a little bit higher. And so, it is important for the students to be able to have those conversations. And the teacher will cultivate this within the classroom. However, that is something and an expectation for us is that they are utilizing and exercising self-advocacy for self and that they're able to say, "Hey, I was here. What do I need to do? How can I get there? Because I want to, at least, I may want to be at the four." And so, what do I need to, to, to do to show you that I'm above and beyond that particular standard piece? Because that's where I feel like I am. And so, I think that's, you know, a, a big piece of it is that self-advocacy.
Ms. Hastings, do we have any questions coming up around that? Is there anything we?
Yeah, we have two, we have two questions.
Go ahead, Kyle.
Kind of that relate to this portion of the PowerPoint. The first question was, are the super-accelerated classes still a thing at LEED?
They are for math. Yes. Super-accelerated is an option for math. We do have about 20% of our students that are in, 20 to 25% that are in a super-accelerated math this year, and we will continue that next year.
And what you have to remember about that particular track is those students are going to be getting seventh and eighth grade math as sixth graders. So, as a seventh grader, they're going to be enrolled in the high school credit algebra. And then, as an eighth grader, the expectation is they will move on to the geometry honors for high school credit. These credits that they earn as seventh and eighth graders will be the first credits that go on their high school transcript, which will be with them until they graduate from high school. So, if you want to be in that track, you, you know, those are the students that are going to be excelling at math and you have to really love math and make sure that's the track you want to be on. Because the, once that is on your transcript, it is very difficult to change a grade that might not be an A or a B.
Additionally, we will look at data. So, it's not just an opt-in. We have to, you have to have MAPS data, Smarter Balance data, teacher recommendation to get in those courses, that course, that track. So.
Okay, the next question, can you explain the Design and Modeling class in more detail, please?
So, Design and Modeling is going through what we at LEED, is, you know, pretty much our premise and basis across the board is PBL. And so, they are in a cycle process. So, it's not linear. They can be in different places of the design process throughout the entire unit, whatever they're working on. It is a problem that they are trying to solve and they then work and confer with their group partners and they come up with, they do some sustained inquiry where they're doing some research. They are answering questions, finding out things that they need to know in order to move forward through that process. They are creating a design brief. They are working to answer, great, they are working to answer that question throughout that entire process. So, they may come up with a product. They may create a prototype. They may do some trial and error, go back. But it just depends on where they are moving within that process. It's not super-linear because they could be, one group could be here, one group could be there. They're always going back and forth and there's a checks and balances within that particular process. But that is how we even move in some of our core classes as well, depending on the PBL project that is presented to the students. And so, it is, you know, it is to promote and have students come out with a higher level of critical thinking in that process. I don't know how well I deal with that, but.
Yeah, great. And really, it's around a problem and they, they're given a problem and they have to independently and then come together as a group, design a solution to that problem or how they're going to address that support or need. And really, it's engineering, building something that can rectify or remedy that problem.
And also, parents, oh, sorry, I was going to say, also, parents during our, because we're, that's coming, anchors away. I know I'm jumping a little ahead, but you do get a chance to experience our design process on that particular day. Because you will go one way, your student will go another and learn what they need to learn. But we take you through that design process. It's real fast track, but you get a chance to see what it is that your child will experience as well.
And one of the things these kiddos and their teens get to find out is maybe what they choose as their design process, there's going to be issues. It's not going to be perfect. And that's part of the evaluation of it, where they can always go back and make adjustments. Well, what would we do differently? So, it's one of those things that in life, it's okay if it doesn't come out the way you want it to. And it's important that these kiddos know that. It's okay to fail at something and learn from it.
And there is no right answer. This is a, this is a class where there's not truly a given right answer. It's, it's not just check, fill in a box or underline or fill in a blank. It is really having to come up with what you think the answer is and then talk about why it is, right? You have to defend why you chose that and how it works. And then, that can be the right answer, or it may not be.
If you have your supporting evidence, then yes, you have a right answer. But you have to be able to defend why you think this is a, a good end product or, or solution.
So, the parents are getting, sorry, the parents are getting excited about classes. When will they sign up for classes such as performing arts?
I'll, I'll field that one. I'll field that one. Students are going to pick their electives through a Google form and the goal is to get that to you by poss, we're, we're looking at possibly end of April. Oh, Mr. Seer is saying no.
Sooner than that.
April.
We have to have, April 10th is the cutoff to accept a seat. Right after April 10th, we will get those out to everybody who's accepted a seat.
Yeah. Ms. Hastings?
Okay. All right, and then last question. Parents said, "I'm not sure if I missed this, but what tools are used to determine in-depth understanding?"
That's the rubric. That is the assessment tool that is used for that particular project, unit, assignment that is given by the, by the teacher. And so, that rubric would more than likely be a single point rubric, because that's what we heavily operate on. And then, the student knows where the proficiency lies or where they need to show their proficiency. And then, if they go beyond that, then that is the conversation that the teacher and the student would have one-on-one.
All right, that's all. We'll go back to the PowerPoint.
All right.
Yeah. Go into slide 10, Kyle. There we go. One more. There we go. So, our magnet expectations. First of all, we are a STEM school, right? So, that means more than just science, technology, engineering, math. Ms. Williams, since Ms. Williams was integral in coming up with what STEM means for our school, I want, I definitely want her to explain what STEM is here at LEED STEM Academy.
All right, so we love to use acronyms on our campus and one being STEM. So, just thinking about our PBL, problem-based learning as, in project-based learning, because they go hand in hand. The P always changes interchangeably, but then also with our design and modeling and design process, it falls right in line with that. So, the solving problems is the S. So, students have to be able to solve problems, work hard to solve them. Our T is in the trial and error. So, as they're working on solving those problems, they have to be open to that trial and error. We like for our students to fail forward and then pick themselves up and keep pushing forward. So, I'm going to try this. If it doesn't work this way, I'm going to try it another way. But they're always thinking and have that mental mindset. Our E stands for effective communication, because we are a heavy school that rely, we rely heavy on collaboration. That's the way I wanted to say it. So, they will be collaborating all day long. Every class they go into, they are in collaboration mode. And so, this is definitely preparing them for that business world and in that life, in that business sector. Because that's all you do. If you think about you on your own job, all you do is communicate and collaborate. So, we want it to be effective, though, and so that they are, you know, definitely asking questions. They're able to formulate, you know, those questions that they need in that particular time or setting. They need to be able to speak and, you know, be clear on what it is that they're saying and then be able to be open to that communication that they receive so that they're understanding it and then they can work through amicably with their group. Mental perseverance, not giving up. We want them to be strong on pushing forward at all times, no matter how difficult it is, knowing how to take a moment and breathe, because I have to do that myself sometimes. Like, okay, breathe, let's regroup and let's refocus and let's get it done. So, that is the premise of our STEM and what we stand on. And you will see STEM in every content area, every content area.
Yeah, it goes way back. Every teacher on campus is a STEM teacher. I, I lost a bet because I, I said the wrong word too many times. You're not an ELA teacher. You're not a STEM teacher. You're, you're a, you're a CTE teacher or an ELA teacher, but everybody is a STEM teacher at LEED STEM Academy.
Okay, so what does it take to be a navigator? And we want to review, we want to talk about our magnet contract. Like, what does this truly mean here at LEED STEM Academy? So, all of you are given this magnet contract to sign when you apply. Is that correct, Ms. Hastings? And you will also, again, sign it when you come in, anchors away or before you start. Uh, uh, anchors away or before you start, if you're for some reason unable to make anchors away, you, we will review this again. We, we hold students able to meet these expectations. We make sure that we set up the structures and systems in place for students to be able to do this and meet this. So again, I don't say accountable, I say we hold them able. We do what it takes to give them the supports and systems to make sure that they can do everything that's on this magnet contract. Unless they choose not to. We will teach them what we want them to do. We won't just tell them, we won't just talk about it. We will teach them, we will take them to specific areas, we will walk them through that, we will do that often. We will give them opportunities to reassess on any assessment given with some work done. And we give them not only opportunities, we give them the time to do that. So they can move their grade if they are unhappy with how they performed on an assessment. They have the options to do that. As I said earlier, on our standard based grading, you have to work to fail at our school. And it is still possible. Students still choose to do that. And some of those students who choose to do that are no longer in our school. Because a magnet school is not for everyone. It is not meant for all students. It is a magnet school. That's why we have the magnet contract. And we make sure that we give them all the supports necessary to meet the expectations in this magnet contract. And you as parents, we will communicate with you if for some reason your child is not meeting these expectations. We will remind you of this, we will remind your student of this magnet contract. And at the end of the year, we want all of our students to have met this and move on in our system. From sixth grade to seventh grade, from seventh grade to eighth grade. And unfortunately, not all of them do. If a student doesn't come with a work ethic, mental perseverance, if they don't drive to do that, it can be difficult. If they struggle academically and they're not willing to put in the work and the time and the effort, they will continue to struggle academically and they will struggle to meet these expectations. So please know that. I, I want all of our students to be successful and I want all of your students to come here and be successful. And there are certain things they have to bring with them for that. Just like I told my kids and I told all of our kids when I've coached school and taught, you have to bring a little bit of work ethic, right, to do this work. And you have to bring the right attitude. Attitude and effort are not two things we can give you here at LEED. We, we can give you everything else to be successful. We cannot give your student the right attitude and effort to make this happen. We, we can't do that. Everything else we can give them to be successful. Anything that I've missed in our magnet contract? Okay. There is a probation process. We are unfortunately having to go through that with some students. That's the next slide, Mr. Morell. We are having to go through, through that with some of our students. And it is not where we want to be. That's not the conversations we want to be having with students and their parents. And yet we will. Because if they're not meeting the magnet contract expectations, they're not gonna have success. And we don't want to set them up for failure. And if we continue to just keep them here, we are setting, setting students up for failure at a high school because they are not gonna gain the necessary skills to be successful in high school. Because we are pushing, as shared earlier, we're an accelerated and/or double accelerated program. There is not a regular English class, there is not a regular math class. There's not a regular science class. We are pushing. So please know that as you're choosing our school. And again, we want everybody to choose our school. We put it out there. You are the ones that know whether this is the right school for your student, your child. You know that, we don't know that. And we will work hard to make them successful when they are here. You as parents are the ones that have to make sure that they bring that attitude and effort and that they're the right students to be successful at need at LEED, because not all students can be, unfortunately. Okay. Um, the last thing we want to share uh, is what we have coming up here at LEED that you as incoming sixth grade parents and students can be involved in.
You want me to talk about it?
Well, I, I don't know, multicultural, I don't know if that's your thing or not, or if you want me to share.
I believe that's my thing. So um, parents, we would love for you guys to come out and get a feel for LEED. Um, we're having a multicultural night on April thirteenth um, from five to seven. We are planning um, some really nice stuff. We have something set in stone already. Um, we have several performances, uh, Del Sol Academy, which is a place where some of our students go when they leave us. Um, Monaco uh, is coming out to do the Mari- uh, Mariachi, thank you. I'm excited, I got too excited. Um, we have a um, what else do we have going on? Uh, we have. I'm sorry, say it.
Battle bots?
Yes, oh my God. Cannot leave out my CTE people, right? Kyle's gonna put that in there. So um, he is going to have a booth with battle bots going on because our team, um, our robotics team uh, is going to Worlds. Um, and this is where all cultures come and they do robotics. Oh my God, this is so, when I tell you it is so awesome. I'm so excited about going, like, I'm over excited about going. But um, it is um, people from Japan, from, I mean, ev- when I say everywhere, everywhere. And they are doing robotics and they speak the same language through the coding and that. So Mr. Morell's gonna have a booth with battle bots so that you can come and you can have the bots battle and do all kinds of things. So that'll be one, a booth that we'll have. We will have a mindful seed is actually coming out. They're gonna do some sessions on um, coping strategies and listening skills. They will have two sessions going. We have uh, Faces. Um, author is coming out for us, um, and she's going to talk about um, uh, uh, art as healing. Um, we have uh, food trucks. We have a ton. I don't want to say a ton. I'm exaggerating. We have about, what, five, four to five food trucks that are gonna be posted with different food that you can enjoy with your uh, family that night. So you don't have to worry about dinner. Um, or feeding them when you leave, you can do that here. We um, again have the performances. Oh, Scholastic uh, Book Fair will be here. Uh, we will have um, one of our own features um, where you can register. That'll be on the uh, website soon. So you could click that hyperlink and you can register for a session to um, learn about your family history. So one of our teachers is gonna host that. Um, and she'll have like several sessions for that and you can sign up for. Um, we'll have the social studies department is gonna be running some um, activities around maps and countries and all, just that's gonna be great. Um, our art department, they have worked on some multicultural art um, that is true and dear to their heart and they're gonna talk about it and that'll be on display for you to see. Um, we have our sixth graders that are working with the uh, foreign language department. And they had a PBL and they'll be uh, displaying some of their work. We have um, a police officer from Metro actually is gonna come and host a booth about her culture from Pakistan. Um, we have a teacher on campus that's gonna talk about her uh, culture and background from Holland. So we have time, and I can go on and on. You, you could tell I'm super excited about multicultural night, right? Um, so we would like for you guys to come out and just join in the fun with us and learn with us. Um, see what the campus is like, um, meet us in person. It would just be a really, you know, nice event for you to come out and just see LEED and, and, and learn about, a little bit about LEED.
Uh, if, if you couldn't tell, Ms. Williams is a little excited about this. She's, she's invested a lot of time and energy up to this point and we still have, have some stuff going on to, to get going. But uh, and she's done a phenomenal job, her and, and a number of her other staff members have been involved, Ms. Vargas, uh, Ms. Wells, if she's listening, a little shout out to Ms. Wells for everything she does to support this as well, as well. So.
I, they, they were working on this while they were still working on Winterfest.
Winterfest.
Right.
And if y'all don't know about Winterfest, well, just wait.
Um, a couple of the reminders, we just give you dates, uh, STEM tank, that's where we, uh, it's kind of like, it's, it's our version of finals, their final project that they've started from one spot and moved to another. And ours is around a, a community here in central southern Nevada. So that's just a little taste of what our STEM tank is about and, and students create their own piece of that and, and how, and they're gonna present and try and pitch that. And we love for you to come out and uh, view those and, and give them some feedback. So we have you score those presentations and give them feedback. Uh, if you want to be a part of summer acceleration, that time is May thirtieth to June sixteenth, you will receive an email, uh, again, once you've committed to LEED, you'll receive some more information regarding that. But those are the dates and we are allowing incoming sixth graders to be here for summer accelerated. And then our I, anchors away is how, is our introduction to sixth graders. So Ms. Murray or Mr. Seer, do you want to take that and talk about that? Because you know far more about it than I do. I've seen it once, that's it.
Okay, so anchors away is uh, tentatively scheduled for July twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. There will be four sessions. No, you do not um, go to all four sessions. There'll be either a morning or afternoon session that we will ask for you to attend. Um, one parent and one, and your student. Uh, the reason why we want one parent is because we can't, we don't have the room for mom, dad, grandma, grandpa and uncle, stroller child, other children, all that, just one parent, please. Parents, you will go off and do it and learn about LEED. And your student is going to go off and learn about LEED. Um, and a whole bunch of fun activities and things. Uh, typically it's about a three-hour tour of LEED.
Different things.
We haven't lost anybody. I mean, I haven't lost anybody, ever. So, sorry. Um, so yeah.
I don't know if these people even remember that.
Oh, gosh.
So for, for planning ahead, I know that's the end of the summer and a lot of us like to, you know, have that summer vacation still happening during that time. Um, if there is uh, an issue with the date and time that is given to you to RSVP for your anchors away, um, just let Mr. Seer and I or myself know. And we can accommodate a little, but again, it's, it's, we figure we're getting five hundred and sixty students. Um, and we have to divide them into five groups. And we have to divide those um, five hundred and sixty parents into four groups. So it's a tight fit. Um, so please, please, please mark your calendars and be on the lookout for more information about that as well. Um, and also to backtrack about sixth grade Google form to choose their elective. Um, and you'll also get a copy of the course catalog. So at least you can read the description and information about those classes. That will be coming from via email, parent link message from Mr. Thorson. It will not come from myself or Mr. Seer.
And the course catalog will also for next year be posted on our website.
Yes.
Once it is, is ready to go.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is the end of what we have. Are there questions we still have out there, uh, Ms. Hastings or Mr. Morell?
Not that I see. Um, I did want to reiterate to, to families um, that are watching, the deadline to accept your seat if you were, your child was selected is Friday uh, the twenty-fourth. And if you are placed in the alternate pool, that will, will have seats open in April, once the dust settles from this initial lottery. Um, that should open in mid-April. I don't have a date yet, so don't hold me to that sometime in April. Typically, that's when it happens. And we'll start pulling from the alternate pool at that point. And it's literally a revolving door. So as soon as a seat is available, the system will automatically choose a student randomly from the alternate pool. There is no waitlist or waitlist numbers. It's just a pool of students waiting to be selected. And that process will go from April all the way through the second week of the new school year in August. So we're looking at um, August, I believe like it was eighteenth, if I'm not mistaken. So um, that is the date for you to um, keep in your mind. That will be the last date that we can enroll is the Friday of the second week of the new school year. So um, if you have questions, I will put my email in the chat again. Um, just for you guys to have that in case you need that. Um, if you have any questions, especially through the summer, I work really good with email because I'm at home. And I typically don't make phone calls from home, but um, I can help you with whatever you need. And if I can't get you an answer, I will point you in the right direction or get the answer for you. Okay?
Okay. Hey, thank you so much. Uh, ladies, gentlemen, Mr. Seer, Ms. Murray, Ms. Hastings, Ms. Vargas, Ms. Zimmerman, Ms. Williams, thank you so much for your time in helping me look good like you always do. And uh, helping to uh, enlighten our parents as to what it means to be a navigator for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I still can't believe I'm saying that, twenty-three, twenty-four, right? We've been doing this for a little bit. So thank you all for uh, attending. Uh, this will be shared on Facebook. We will put a recording uh, also in the YouTube, right, our, our YouTube page. We're gonna get that out there. So you don't have to have all this memorized. You can go back and view it later. So if you have further questions, please re- reach out to Ms. Hastings and she will point you the right direction if she can't answer it. So again, thank you so much. Thank you for your time. Look forward to seeing you all very soon.